City of Denison, City Council, Lincoln, Delaware, 2014. Our invitation is now to be given by Reverend Ron Thomas.
Let us pray. Praise your Father, we've just come thanking you that this is the day that the Lord has made. We shall rejoice and be glad. Oh, we thank you on tonight that as each agenda that is being presented tonight, Lord, that skillful and godly wisdom would flow free in this place tonight. We pray for the Spirit of wisdom, the Spirit of understanding, the Spirit of counsel, the Spirit of might, the Spirit of knowledge, Lord. And that we will not judge after the sight of eye, neither reprove after the hearing of the ear, but with righteousness shall every matter be judged. Lord, we pray for every city council member. We pray for this whole city of Denison in the mattress, in the mighty name of Jesus, we pray.
Amen.
Next on the agenda is item number two, the consent agenda. Each of these items is recommended by the staff and approval thereof will be strictly on the basis of the staff recommendation. Any prior board or council action as the case may be from time to time. Approval of the consent agenda authorizes the city manager to implement each items in accordance with the staff recommendation. The listings of the consent agenda provide the allow the council members to discuss, withdraw any items prior to approval of the agenda. If no items are pulled, the consent agenda below will be approved with one motion. Any questions or discussions?
Mayor Protem, I'm going to approve the second.
Have a motion by Council of Vex, second by Council of Melbourne. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is item number three, public hearings. Item 3A, receiver report holding public hearing considering amendments to amend the City of Denison Code of Orders, Chapter 28, Article 3, zoning district. Ms. Brockett.
Mayor Protem, Council. We're here tonight to receive a report, have a public hearing and consider an ordinance on amendments to the zoning at Lakeside Development District, Section 2827-2, calling for a Lakeside Development Plan. This is for development in that area. Also a development agreement to develop any property that is recently annexed. You can develop this under a planned development overlay district and the base zoning would be the Lakeside Development District. We'd like to amend that. Also the process, amend Section 2827.2B, which is approval process, amend Section 2827.2C2, which is the condition for the Lakeside Development Plan. And also amend the 28, Section 2843-2, planned development overlay district.
This is a public hearing. If there's anyone here to speak concerning this item, please go forward. If not, the public hearing is closed. This item, any questions from council? Any comments from staff?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion from Council of Raleigh, second by Council of Dwyer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Motion carries. Public, number B, receiver report holding public hearing considering an ordinance for zone change from office district to business district, business park district for property out of the J Streper survey, A 1156, containing 1.75 acres and 105 Royal Drive. Ms. Brockett.
Mayor Council, we have a letter petition from UHS of Texoma Inc. for a zone change from office district to business park district. They would like to sell the building to Leonard Kuzma who plans to put a business steel core security straps in the structure. It used to be a doctor's office and a billing office for the hospital. And he would like to construct a security strap for tight ends for spa, boats, and miscellaneous We did notify six property owners. We had one approval and no disapprovals. The planning and zoning has recommended approval and staffs recommended.
Is there anyone here to speak concerning this request? If so, please go forward at this time. Mr. Cole, I see your, if you'll please state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, sir. This is Ronnie Cole, 16 Ambassador Court, Denison. I'm representing Leonard Kuzma from California, who is relocating his business here. This is a sample of his product that he makes. That's a security strap, but the unique thing about this strap is it's a lockable strap. It's only one that's kind of market. He's currently operating in California, plans to expand here, close his office in California, move here. He's got contracts with major distributors in Corvial, Texas. He will not be manufacturing any of those parts. This is an assembly operation on them. And so there won't be any big trucks. He actually delivers out of small pickup trucks to his distributor. But he's got a contract to increase his business by 10 times what he is now. He'll be bringing himself here plus the four or five of their employees. Here to answer any questions, I also represent the hospital, I've also got Justin Kendricks from the hospital here. Since the hospital owns the property, they have to be the ones to apply the zone change. Mr. Kuzma already has his financing in place and he's ready to close on this property this week.
Any questions, Mr. Cole?
Ronnie, is all manufacturing done indoors?
Yes.
All simply?
Yes, all simply done indoors.
There'll be no eyes or was outside?
No.
Okay.
No environment with that?
No. Just complete, uh, that property.
Any other questions, Mr. Cole?
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak concerning this request? Do I have a public hearing called, any questions from council? Have a motion from Council of Melbourne, and a second from Council of Vex. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, the public hearings, item C, receiver report holding public hearing considering ordinance for conditional use permit for rehabilitation care facility in a local retail district for property out of the original town, lot 16, block 20, 301 West Ford from Ms. Brockett.
Mayor Council, the applicant James White was just owner of the building. He would like to sell the building. The structure has been an event center, holding parties with weddings and other events. The buyer, Larry Goodwin, plans to place a House of Disciples Life Recovery Center for men who will live on site and participate in educational instruction and training. We did notify 14 property owners. We had no approvals and we had three disapprovals. This will take the five, six votes. The disapprovals were they felt the location was not appropriate. Planning and zoning reviewed this and recommending approval with conditions of a limit of nine persons unrelated and two supervisor personnel and to address the off-street parking for the facility and employees and staffs recommending approval with those conditions.
Says a public hearing, you want to hear to speak concerning this request, please go forward at this time. Will please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. I'm Larry Goodwin, 806 West Sears Street here in Denison, and I'm pastor of Refuge Church here in Denison, and I'm also in a partnership with Phil Briggs, who's with me tonight, with House of Disciples out of Longview, Texas. And we're here to answer any questions that we can that you guys might have about our project that we're wanting to do at this location to bring a life recovery discipleship program for men to this particular location.
Any questions for Mr. Goodman?
So will this be convicted felons would be housed there potentially, or how, what's your name?
Sir, I'm going to let Phil. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Philip Briggs, 210 South Green Street, Longview, Texas. Mayor Protem, we can, based on that they're not an aggravated criminal, in other words, if they had any major aggravated assault or sexual assault. The current location where we're at, Longview, we have had convicted felons who have done their time and have even on parole or in probation and come in and stay with us for the duration of 12 months. We feel that the conviction is of the aggravated or sexual, we do our part to try to find placement while they're at somebody else's location or off-site location somewhere else. Having multiple properties, we can, we can work things out in that, in that nature.
What's your, you said you had a facility in Longview, where else do you have?
We have one down in High Island, down in Volver Peninsula, just east of Galveston. And we have sister partnership in Madisonville, Texas. This is what other we all start.
Do you have any state licensing or oversight?
No state licensing. We're a nonprofit, religious, faith-based, private donation ministry with just the credentials of being a pastor and clergyman.
Council of Vex?
That's, that pretty much covered the question, I guess.
I have one more question. Where is your funding going to come from?
We are, we're coordinating several churches in our area that will be contributing to this as well as plans for, House of Disciples also operates a retail facility called Kitchen Grace, which we bring into this area, which would also provide some of the funding. But it would be private donation and some percentage of the retail that would come once that stores up.
Any other questions? Ms. Juslin?
In your, currently you have two facilities operating, this would be your third, is that correct? Other than your central facility?
That's correct.
Have you had any violent crimes associated with, as a result of these?
None whatsoever.
You have a question. Where do your referrals come from, for these calls? Where do most people?
Primary referrals come from family members looking for a place for their family or loved ones that have a place where they can be, number one, discipled and then also go through a recovery, a life recovery program. I'll be off handing referrals from family members of churches. Some, some DA will look for opportunities, you know, to help somebody that doesn't need to necessarily go back to prison or to safety, but they just need a little time to get back on their feet and get into a group setting.
The person they could stay for up to a year, is that correct?
We do have, we ask them to commit to one year. And then, of course, we have transitional processes that follow that. It's time, it's time for minutes.
Are they required to have jobs or distinct employment?
The first eight months, we don't require jobs because our focus is to, is to try to simplify their lives so that they can get things back in order, try to make communication with the indebtedness and things of that nature. The last four months we do, if permitted, they can find full-time employment, begin paying back debts, child support of that nature, to get back on track.
Thank you. Is there a minimum requirement for what qualifies you for your program? I mean, you have to be, have a record, criminal record or no?
Criminal record. We, we have people in our other locations that just come for the discipleship, that just want to get on, on track. We do background checks. The only requirement we ask is that they want to change their life. Again, no sexual aggravated or assault, criminal record. If they've had misdemeanors or if they were felony for drug charges of that nature, then, then, of course, our background checks will reveal that and we're able to assess them at that point. But not everybody's accepted, you know, that's, that's obviously first come, first served, but based on maybe our requirements as well on our, our application.
Thank you.
Is it primarily drug rehab?
No, it's not primary. We, we don't deal with drug issues. We deal with discipleship. And then through that, we do try to connect with 12-step programs, AA, NA programs that will help facilitate the, the drug conditions and issues for the past.
I think they've recommended that number one and nine, testaments been involved. How does that compare to your facility in Longview?
Longview, we're able to house 30 men. My wife and I actually are onsite leadership as well as, we call ourselves the house parents, so we're 24/7 onsite. We also raise up our leaders within, so there, we try to build our, our management leadership within the program. But here, it'd be a nine maximum, the two leaders present that have completed our program and gone through the leadership training module.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anyone else who can concern your request, please go forward, please. If you will, please state your name.
All of us.
For the record, sir.
This is Sir.
Okay.
I'm Father Don Proshaw from St. Louis Episcopal Church. Home address, or business?
Uh, home address.
909 West Gandy. And 427 West Wither. Been there for a long time. I found myself in a very peculiar position here tonight. For the first time ever in 44 years of my career, I rise to oppose something like this, which is rather remarkable in that I have overseen managed care toward three facilities, Florida, California, and in the state of Missouri, where this kind of work went on. I'm, I'm a little shocked and amazed that there's not, they're not going to have any licensed practical counselors who never tried about it. Don't understand a lot of parts of this thing. I don't understand why it's being attempted to be located where it is. I think it's a very serious error for safety, security, other reasons. Put it right between two great schools and other facilities that will have to, if this thing goes in, will have to raise their security to a much higher level than what it is right now, just to make sure that some individuals who are escaping folks who are being treated at this facility simply cannot have an influence or have access to them. I worry, as the head of school himself, that they're three blocks away. I don't think this is a good placement for that. Some of you may know, we operate in St. Louis, three AA groups, marketing of groups, working with the course right now to establish some additional things for allegations, considering with the judges. We have a variety of things that we are fully engaged in in St. Louis, so I'm actually, I'm in a very peculiar position here, that there's not a part of this plan that I see that's really helpful to the community that's being placed in, within our greater community. Do we need a facility like this? Probably. I think we probably need one in every community in the United States or not, from what I know about the issues of alcohol and drug abuse. Needing for discipling? Yes, sir, I testified to that. But we're talking about a very peculiar population. I didn't hear anything said about nobody would be eliminated if they had been involved in any form of domestic violence. That's a huge concern for me. Once a month, I get this little packet that goes across my desk that has all these folks who are involved with all kinds of various forms of abuse and whatnot. We see those things because of our children. I wonder if any of those folks are going to end up being in that packet, and that concerns me. I've heard nothing that tells the otherwise. This is not, I don't think, I think it's admirable what they're trying to do, I just don't think it's well suited or where they're trying to do it. And I would urge you fatally for the health, safety, and security of our children and the families in that immediate area, the schools, and the other entities not to approve this. Right idea, wrong place, wrong time. I appreciate your listening.
Any questions?
I'd like to ask about the shelter, that's what, on the next call.
Yes, sir.
What kind of problems do they cause?
What kind of problems?
Yeah, they caused at schools any problems?
As the shelter?
Those are people that just.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just rationalizing through my head. I'm on the board there also, sir.
Well, okay.
Okay. To my knowledge, they have none. Are there problems or have there been problems historically there? Probably. That may have happened. I can't, I can't tell you one, but not looking at a spreadsheet, I can't answer clearly. But you're not talking about the same group of people. The people that are going into this facility cannot go into the shelter for various reasons because their lifestyle choices, let's just call it that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Anyone else here to speak concerning this request?
Please state your name and address.
My name is Frank Bunter, I live at 213 Island View Hospital, Texas. And this is Philip Melton.
313 South, Philip and Denison.
I represent, Philip and I represent St. Patrick's Catholic Church. We're located just across the street from this facility. And I want to make it clear, we're not against this ministry. We totally believe that anyone that is struggling with drugs, struggling with alcohol, the, the only way they're going to get cured is to have a relationship with Jesus Christ. And this ministry does that. We are concerned about the location. Being across the street, we have a children's playground, we have an activity center, and we have an adoration chapel, which is occupied by individual people, men and women and young people, 24 hours, seven days a week, they are in that chapel. And so they're in there at all hours of the day and time. So, again, we're not against the ministry. We are really concerned about the location. Does it really need to be there? That's all I have. Oh, one more thing. It's a conditional use, right, permit? So if the ministry sells that property and it can be used for someone else to come in that may or may not have the stringent criteria that this ministry may be employing there, what happens then to the neighborhood and to the vulnerable people that we have there? So that's a question.
As staff, the city attorney to, they'll address the conditional use permit, if it is a light-staffed.
Mayor Protem, the rule of thumb is you zone for the, you zone for the use and not for the owner. There may be a different element with conditional use, and I'd have to punt that to the city attorney, off the top of my head. I wouldn't want to venture to say one way or the other. The back of my mind, I think if you zoned it with a conditional use permit, it's only going to stand for your future owner, but carry, or what do you mean, have thoughts on that?
I agree with Mr. Hannah, but I'd like to take the time to look at that a little more in detail. It's absolutely correct that you zone for the use, not the owner. So I believe, without researching it further, that regardless, if you granted the conditional use, regardless who owns it, that would be the use.
Thank you for allowing us to speak today. We really appreciate it. Thank you, Pastor Protem.
Any questions?
Have you had any issues with the center, it's just the east, west of there?
We have one incident, Philip, would you be coming?
So years ago, our adoration chapel that Frank was just talking about, we had an individual who was either coming off of or was still high on crack, that actually gained admittance to our entryway, which has a keypad, so you've got to have the code to get in. So we don't know if they had the code, if they waited till somebody was coming in, but there were actually people in the chapel when they came in. There's a little building at the entrance, I don't know if there's a, it's a picture on here, that you can actually see, but you go into that little building, houses our restrooms, and there's a place to sign in, there's also a place to stick donations for the upkeep of the chapel. And there were two individuals involved, one of them sort of, I guessed, did the lookout, all the other person broke into the door with the slotted crop law, and they took whatever money was in there. That's the only incident that I'm aware of that we've had in ten, and that's been, like I said, within the last couple of years, so. Can I answer your question?
Yeah, and I've worked directly associated with Schilford, the rising Kenny Schilford, you know?
With individuals coming through there?
With the ones that did this.
No.
I think his question was.
No, absolutely not.
Mayor Protem, I'm going to double check with Fay if she had any certainty on that. So Regina, if you're 100% certain on the conditional use permission, maybe that'll be a chance or two, but if not, we'll have to research it.
Well, they could use it for any retail use, because the base zoning, the existing retail, the condition used would be on top of that, so they could use it for other uses rather than just the conditional use.
So anything in the retail zone district?
Is there anyone else here to speak concerning this request? So please, please state your name and address.
My name is James White, I'm the property owner. I just want to briefly share.
May I give this to your advisor, I'm sorry?
What's that?
Your advisor, please.
4210 Crawford Street Road, Denison, Texas.
Thank you.
Okay. Just a little brief history of the building, I was formerly from Niceville Office, and I'm mostly, you know, association of members of Niceville Office. Many parties were given at that location over a number of years. You know, neighbors, also a lot of planes would be there, motor cars everywhere. Big parties, and I'm not talking about 100 people, 200 people or so, excuse me, plus. While I owned the building, also a lot of large parties have been held there over the years. I've elected recently to minimize those parties because I was looking at some other options for that particular property. This property has been offered down to this group, and I feel like that the, any issues that would be brought to that location would certainly be minimal compared to some of the problems that we've had in the immediate area over a number of years. More specifically, when you talk about drug addicts and people who commit other crimes, we've had a number of crack houses very close to the property. I'm not sure if any of those people have ever broken into the Catholic Church or into health facilities that are located in the immediate area. And I'm not here to complain and put down anybody who has an existing business in the area. I have been rather supportive and not complaining for anybody, including the shelter and any other functions that are going on in that area. The only thing that I'm asking the council to do today is to take into consideration, you know, what would you rather have? There are big parties, would you rather have some other activities? There are many things I could do with the building, but again, I've elected to, to make this, give these people an opportunity to make a person. this, give these people an opportunity to make a purchase. Now, one other thing. If we look in the immediate area, I'm not talking about across town, I'm not talking about on the west side or the south side. If we talk about the immediate area, we have had multiple crack houses selling crack on a daily basis, day and night, within three to four blocks in that area for many years. Most, and I will be very specific about this, since 1985, just if you would go back and look at the records, you know and I know anybody who lived there, and I lived there for over 20 years on the north side of town. A lot of stuff has happened there within very close range of this. I don't know if anybody's ever robbed the Catholic Church. I don't know if anybody's ever robbed the shelter. I don't know if anybody's done any of that stuff. But I do know this, that building hasn't been broken into since I owned it, since I purchased it in 1991. Now, does that say anything about the building? I've had stuff in there of value over a number of years, everything from music equipment, I had vending machines in there that have never been, the building's never been broken into, and you can check the records there, not one time. And also, I could say, and I could complain about individuals who have lived in the shelter who've come down and spent more time on the stoop, that's the entryway. I mentioned that at the last meeting. I'm not, I never complained, not one complaint. Only thing I've asked people to do is please clean up your mess when you get through eating there. If you're hanging around, please don't leave your litter in, and that's the only thing I've ever asked. And I told that to the people. Not, no complaints to the shelter. Only thing, again, just please consider what the options are. I could do many things there at that location with the existing zoning, but I ask you to give the people an opportunity to take care of some people who in dire need of help. And if you want to scrutinize, I think, well, you wouldn't have to, because several people in here have done that. I'll pose a few rhetorical questions. No, stop. Your time, your time is more valuable. I'll leave it at that, and I appreciate everything.
Is there any questions for Mr. White?
On behalf of answering any questions, since I'm a lifelong resident here, I could probably address anything. Anybody? Again, I'm supported, I support what they're doing 100%. I've got personal reasons doing that.
Thank you. Anybody else here to speak concerning this request? Please go forward. If not, any question?
I have a question for the gentleman that would like to put this program in place. Have you considered any of the locations in Madison? What's your minimum criteria for a structure or any, I know nearly any of these is going to have to be some structural modification to it.
Yeah. Just for example, in Longview, we chose an old funeral home that came available. It was just to put it ease, I hope to express that our current location is within, within 200 feet of one of the larger Baptist churches in Longview with a five-day, Monday through Friday daycare. And the very same topic came up, you know, the safety and security of not only the church members, but also safety and security of the children. Let me remind, we are not a, we're not a facility where men are going to be mandated. These are not criminals that are coming to us. These are sons and fathers and uncles who have come to you at the end of the road, who just need a place to get a fresh start. And so having where our location is in Longview, that was a concern, and when we addressed that we would, that we would do all that we could to provide top security within the house. We have 82, 82 monitors our security system at night when all the men go to bed. We put a lockdown for the safety of our men because some men come in with people looking for them. Talk about domestic violence, you know, men get beat up too in this day. And there are people looking to take, you know, to get their money back or something. So we want to offer protection, safety, and security for our men in the program as well as those that are outside, and so that helps prevent and keep men in the house as well. My wife and I, like I said, we both live there, so we're definitely concerned about our safety. You know, my wife and I don't have children, but we're just turning 40, and these men become brothers and uncles and nephews to both my wife and I. And the agreement that we have with First Baptist is that we take care of our security. We do what we say that we're going to do. We manage our men's time from the moment they get up to the time they go to bed every night. If a man chooses to leave prematurely, if that's his choice, he becomes then as he was when he either got there, or he calls some family member, or we help assist and try to get him back to another location. We never put a guy on the street for the sake of becoming homeless again. Our efforts and endeavors are to make sure that the men who are in our program, it's easier, let me say this, it's easier to put a man out than it is to deal with his issues. And so unless there is a bombing crime, which never has happened in the five-plus years we've been doing this, we create a family atmosphere, we create opportunity for men to work out their issues, and so the safety and concern of people around us is one of our top, if not the most important priority in our ministry. And the men hold each other accountable, so they're never alone, they're in pairs, or they're in groups, or they're together with a leader. And so how we find those facilities, they find us almost. It seems like the one in Madisonville was the old elementary school, and it's housed right next door to the current elementary school, where hundreds of elementary kids are there every day, and there's 30 men in that program. Our High Island location is a, is a, is a church parsonage, but has neighbors right next door with children that are under the age of 11 that play out their yard every day. Our men know because of our rules, they're not to go out to the front yard, they're to stay busy, be in the backyard, be across the 5.9 acre. So we keep them busy, keep their minds from going idle, and we keep them in some kind of production mode doing something. So that's how we found our other locations, how this one came about. Obviously, I had to let Mr. Goodman speak on that part, but, you know, we just looked for a place where the biggest need and opportunity could be met, and that seems to be the area that is attracting people and men that are going to be in our, in our facility.
At this point, we've only explored one location that's correct.
We have, and we came in a couple weeks ago, and we did drive around and look at some other locations, but at this moment, this is particularly one that seems to best fit the interest of our, our needs and ministry.
That's my biggest concern, is that, you know, physical location. I fully agree that this is needed, any faith-based rehabilitation that I promote is most definitely needed, but-
We also, in partnerships with the community, we fed 33,000 meals out of our Longview location last year on less than $1,500. All right? That's three hot meals a day, good meals, a lot of chicken, which is pretty common in shelter-type scenarios. But we barter, and we do a lot of partnerships with other ministries to help take care, and we feel that this could be a greater asset than not by bringing, because we're not talking about criminals, we're talking about men who just have life-controlling issues. Whether that's gambling, porn addiction, drugs happen to be involved with it, these are, these are life-controlling issues that we feel could be a benefit to the community.
What's your timeline on opening the facility?
My management team or my leaderships, I got one of the individuals with me today as a ride-along, keeping me on the way back. We have our management team ready, our leadership team is ready. They've gone through the 12-month, and now they're currently in their third month of their leadership training module. And so within 90 days, you know, we could be, we could be bringing harm in, and normally, we just pay the process, we normally bring two or three guys from our house first who are upper faves, who have gone through the first six, seven, eight months as a way of putting our best foot forward to demonstrating that these are the products, you know, if we want to talk about manufacturing, this is what we manufacture. And these are bright, great, great men that have a great calling and purpose, and so we would bring that in, and obviously through the churches and local network. But again, if we feel like in any situation, if the gentleman coming from this location needs to get out of his backyard for a season, we would send him and transfer him to Longview for a while. Sometimes getting a fresh start is an answer. And so we can pose those opportunities as we have in our facility.
Thank you.
Have you, have you identified who your residents are going to be? Do you already have?
I have no idea.
Okay, you don't, you're not that far.
They all have the same face, they just have different names.
What about, you referred to house parents in your Longview facility. Did you, have you identified house parents? Maybe you said that are-
The two, the two leaders that would be coming up are both current graduate residents of our program. We have a vested interest in pursuing ministry, but also wanting to reestablish and reconnect with family that happens to live an hour away, so it's just an open door to bring him in. But we have two men that will be managing this property 24/7, living on-site, paid by ministry, fully compensated in that regard.
Thank you. Just about the location.
Now, just, is there anything critical to the latest decision? Two weeks to a month, are y'all on a kind of critical time schedule?
No, sir.
Because I want to make sure that we're making the best decision we can with the city of Madison.
Mr. White?
Mayor Proton and council, if I could just, if you bear with me just a second here, I want to, I think I have an answer to a question about the conditional use and expiration. In our code of ordinances, the under conditional use permit, expiration and revocation of a conditional use permit, a building permit, a conditional use permit will expire if the building permit has not been approved within a year of the approval of the conditional use permit. So if they have a major remodeling to do, and they need the building permit as part of this conditional use permit, if they don't pull that permit within a year, the conditional use permit expires. If the building permit expires, so typically that's six months to a year, depending on what you're doing, if the use has been discontinued or abandoned for a period of six months, so if this place leaves and it's fallow for six months or more, then the conditional use expires. Or if council puts a termination date attached to the conditional use permit. City can also, we can also revoke a conditional use permit if any of the activities there are in violation of the conditional use. So if they decide to, oh, house 11 or even 10, nine and a half, you know, we can pull the conditional use permit. Abandonment and replacement of conditional use, basically that follows the non-conformal use statutes in our zoning ordinance, which, again, that timeline's set at six months, and there are specific requirements, but if the use is abandoned for six months, they lose, lose the conditional use permit. Something that council may want to consider is the termination date attached to the permit. If council's, in any way or extent, one way or the other, something you might want to consider is giving them a trial period. You know, you could put a, give them a conditional use permit for a year and then come back and review it, they have to apply for another conditional use permit, but if they didn't, it would give them an opportunity to prove themselves, for lack of a better term, without running, without the risk of having it be a use that's established until they stop using it or violating the permit in some fashion. It's just food for thought.
Thank you. I have one question for the chief. Have you had any issues at the shelters that you was making that I'm concerned?
No, sir, not that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Mayor Proton, I'd like to make a motion to approve this conditional use permit.
Have a motion from Councilman Bag, second from Councilman Melvin. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is item number four, these are items for individual consideration. Item 4A, receive a report on the discussion, take action on approval of the general election May 10th, 2014. Ms. Hart.
I'm making her come up.
The state sets the general election for May 10th, 2014. It'll be for place five, which is an at-large condition, and place three, which is a single member district. The only polling location that I changed from last year is from the West Side Fire Station to Parkside Baptist, for more space to save fewer employees that work at the fire station. Early voting will be April 28th to May 6th, with the two 12-hour days being April 30th and May 1st.
Any questions, Ms. Hart?
I'm sure it's in here, but I missed it. Will all voting on that day be done in the same facility, or will it be in two different locations?
For early voting?
For any voting that will be occurring on that vote. Is there any other voting going on at that point?
The school districts will have their voting on the same days.
But they'll be in different facilities. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, motion?
Mr. Mayor Proton, I'm in for approval.
Second.
Motion, Councilman Bag, and second Councilman Bag, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Don't get me confused, you don't get my, it's like, can't, give the man one there. Next on the agenda is item B, report, receive a report on the discussion, take action on the special election for May 10th, 2014. Ms. Hart?
The special election will be to fill single member district one with the resignation of Matt Healy. It has all the same stipulations as the first one, same polling location, same early voting dates, everything will be on the same ballot.
Any questions? I'll do your type of motion.
I'll just approve.
Motion, Councilman Rowley, second Councilman Melvin, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Motion carries. Item C, receive the report, hold discussion, take action on election agreement with the school district for the general election on May 10th, 2014.
All right. We have to hold, a school district are required by law to hold a election with a different political subdivision, so we typically will enter into an agreement with them, we do not incur any of the costs that are required to have all of their own election equipment and create all of their own ballots, so it will not affect our elections. There's just a thing.
Any questions? Motion carries.
Second.
Yeah, the motion from Councilman Melvin, second from Councilman Bag, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Motion carries. Before we go on to the next item, just clarification from back on 3C, I need to close that public hearing going on. The motion was made and done pretty quickly, so.
You can close the public hearing, and Courtney's okay with the votes standing?
Yeah, yeah.
The public hearing, because it went so fast and was our threats, we expect. Item D, receive a report on the discussion, take action on the publication policy change. Ms. Hart, was late.
Evening. Mayor Proton and members of the council, some months ago in August of 13, Mr. Hannah charged Kerry and myself with organizing an employee benefit congress, and the purpose of this group was to gather individuals in order to educate the population of our staff with the benefits available to them that the city provides, also to give them a chance to be a sounding board on those benefits, and then to make any recommendations that they might have concerning the benefits that the city gives and provides to them. So a lot of our first few meetings were spent educating them when all benefits were provided. They were able to go back to their divisions, represent the congress, make sure that employees were aware of everything that was offered to them. They also were able to spread information as far as any wellness appropriate, answer questions that arose because of new benefits and new changes that we've had this year. Those congress members represent a variety of our employees. We have represented it from the police department, fire department, public works, several office staff members, and then we also have some on-voting advisors being in the West here and on the Bay. And because of those meetings, we do have one recommendation that the congress would like to present.
The recommendation that they are, that we're recommending is to add two tiers to the vacation accrual process. We did a comparison with several other surrounding cities, and it shows that we were behind on the amount of vacation that we allow for our employees, and we wanted to try to stay competitive with the cities around us, and so we've added these two tiers.
competitive with the cities around us, and so we've added these two additional tiers, so you don't have to wait 10 years to get an increase in vacation time. So, instead of waiting 10 years to get 15 days, at five years, you would be increased to 13 days, at 10 years, 15 days, and at 15 years, you get 18 days. We're keeping the maximum approval for vacation at 240 hours, so there's no financial burden if you have to pay somebody out, everybody's still capped at that 240 hours. Civil service is affected, but only at the 15-year tier, when we're recommending that everybody go up to 18 days. That's it. Any questions?
Any questions?
Mr. Hannah, how does this impact us financially?
As Perry had mentioned, the gross payout impact is minimal because we've tapped, we've maintained a cap of 240 hours, we're on non-civil service and civil service police officers, firefighters are still capped at 360, so none of that changes. The big question that I asked in the review for this particular geni, was what happens to us when somebody, you know, prior to retiring? Retires. And one of the research elements they came back with was the majority of our people, once they arrive in five years, they're here, they stay, in the 75% range, that if they're here five years or longer, they're with us until they retire. So, one of the elements that I think is good about this is that we're able to help retain those employees and give them a little bit of extra benefit that are here longer than five years, and see, once you pass that hurdle, you're here for a long haul. I think that the difference of that 25% is going to be minimal, you're talking, you know, maybe three or four days for somebody who's accrued something other than what they would have accrued now, and that cost, I mean, I'll look at Renee, but you're talking a couple hundred bucks, it's not a huge, there's not a huge budget impact with doing this.
Impact is for our staffing availability, I mean, we're going to be less man-staffed, is that going to, is there going to be an impact there, or required additional headcount?
I don't believe we're going to have to add employees because of this.
If I may, Rich brings some numbers this afternoon in anticipation that y'all want to have some questions concerning this. Over the past two years, the turnover rate in 2012 was right at 7.5%. Of those employees that terminated, that doesn't include retirement, but 70% were either resigned or terminated, had been here less than five years. In 2013, our turnover rate was 9.4%, and 84% of those had been here less than five years. You also have the stipulation that when someone comes in, they aren't allowed to use vacation for six months, so once they hit that mark, generally, they're ready to burn some vacation. It's not, it's not likely that they would have a big accumulation of vacation time on the books over the five-year mark.
Do we, do we have any, is our policy to do an exit interview with the staffing?
It is, in fact, yes.
Okay, do we have any data that says, salary, vacation, what's, what drives our change staff?
I think what generally drives our staying, our change in staffing is, one, especially at the base level, is dissatisfaction with the job, they don't like doing X, Y, or Z. We lost a solid waste truck driver here recently, Cynthia Sherman, in his exit interview, he didn't have anything negative to say about the city, he simply got paid more in Sherman, so that's the reason why he jumped. So, some of it is driven by things that you would think would drive someone to jump, they have a better opportunity, or they've identified a place that pays better, or had better benefits. So, I haven't seen, in the exit interviews I've seen and read, I haven't seen a large percentage that I would say, you know, your vacation policy is lacking, that's why I'm making, to be fair. But I do think, as I said, I agree with the recommendation here, I think it's, I think it costs us little and provides employees with a little extra something to help retain and keep them over that five-year hold.
Well, should I put a bit of our vacation policy, what's our sick leave policy, what do employees get in pay due for sick leave?
All employees earn 10 hours of men sick leave. We don't have a max period over on them, they're allowed to bill that up, but upon exit, they're only paid off many days. Yes, retirement only, and it's civil service. Anybody that's not civil service would not receive that unless they retire.
One of the other things we do with vacation, which is unique to Dennison from other communities I've worked in, most communities allow employees to donate sick leave hours to a pool, a sick leave pool, for those employees that have a catastrophic illness or running time. Dennison allows that, but rather than sick time, we allow people, we require people to donate vacation, they put a little skin in the game from a employee's standpoint, and frankly, we have generous employees, they have vacation on the books, they're generous, if they donate, I've yet to see, we've one employee who asked for hours and didn't receive any, and that was unusual, that employee left shortly thereafter, and I think he didn't get the hours because his fellow workers didn't feel like he was contributing very much. So, it's kind of a check and balance in that system, and I think it's working for us.
Have we explored the thought of a time bank where your vacation and sick leave would be all cumulative?
Like a payday-off kind of thing, you get some payday off?
Well, what I'm saying is you get X number of days of vacation and sick leave total, and then you don't feel like, if you need a day off, you don't feel like you've got to tell somebody you're sick, and really just send the day off.
We have not explored that, and there are, there are companies, in the private sector that's more prevalent than the public sector, there are some public sector entities that are doing it, but I would say it's not as common as it seems.
It's not common.
It's uncommon.
Any other questions? Any other questions, would you hand the motion?
Second.
Yeah, motion from Councilman Dowell, second Councilman Melvin, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side?
Same.
Motion carries. That concludes the agenda for tonight. Before I close this deal, I would like to ask the, let me, Chief, give us an update on Officer Bird, if you don't mind, and also, for my people, keep this family in your prayers.
Mayor Proton and council, letters before I got the day is they took the breathing tube out, and he's able to breathe on his own. He was never, I was with him Friday when he was found, and he's never been to the point where he was unable to breathe on his own, but they put the tube in to assist his breathing, and there's, there's some fluid buildup, but they think they can, they can get rid of that. He does have movement on his left side, and actually, they started some therapy today already. He still is unable to speak, and they're starting to work with him on speech therapy today, and doing some other things with him. So, I don't know what, you know, his condition, as far as, you know, what the doctors are saying, they've had him sedated the last few days to assess the blood clots, I was told that the one clot has roughened into two now, which is good, got smaller, so there's progress, it's just, it's just been going slow. And we certainly, as the police department, appreciate their community support and support council and city management, and we've got a lot of employees that are taking their time to go visiting down in Plano right now, and so we're hoping he'll be out of the hospital soon and back for recovery.
Thanks. We're done.